Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's public budget hearing. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. At this time, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I am here as well. All of the county commissioners are present. I just want to note for the record that there's a sign language interpreter that's available for those that need it for this public budget hearing. This will also be shown on a broadcast with the normal closed captioning option. At this time, I'd ask that you all who are so able to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will now open the public budget hearing for the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This meeting is public. It will be live streamed and it will be recorded. Pursuant to the Kansas State statutes, the clerk has provided notice to the public regarding this public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to offer taxpayers an opportunity to comment on the board's proposal to exceed the revenue neutral rate for 2026. It is important to note that during this public comment period, district commissioners are prohibited from making any comments. Once the public has been heard, a motion and rule call vote will be conducted among the district commissioners to determine whether the board approves exceeding the revenue neutral rate prior to the closure of the public hearing. At this time, we will hear a presentation from Robin Simes regarding the budget. Ms. Simes.
Good evening, Robin Simes with the Budget Financial Planning Department. The commissioner or the chairman already went through the agenda, so I'll go ahead and continue on. There are three major roles of counties. They serve as an administrative arm of state government, provide services required by the state, and provide locally determined services. While we are mandated by the state to run our election office and motor vehicles, issue permits, maintain land records and other service provisions, reimbursement rates are not keeping up with costs. In looking at the 2026 budget and beyond, there are several factors influencing our financial picture. Inflation has impacted the county and from 2019 to 2024, the cumulative increase in CPI was 22.5%, while the increase in the building cost index was 36.5%. Over the last four years, we've seen increases as large as 29% for medical services in the jail and corrections, and also increases in concrete costs of 50% that affect our public works departments, just to name a few. As we face rising costs, we also face the challenges of serving more people, some of whom are the community's most vulnerable residents and rely on our assistance. Johnson County is the largest county in Kansas and is within the top 4% of US counties when it comes to population size. Older adults will account for over half of all population growth in the Kansas City region. Between 2020 and 2050, the number of people 65 and older is anticipated to increase 56%. That same age group increased 35% from 2001 to 2020. We're also seeing a 4% increase annually in our med act call volume. Data shows the majority of calls from those aged 50 and older. The increased call volume can put stress on the system, which can impact med acts response time. Currently, med acts response time goal is arriving on scene under 10 minutes 90% of the time. In two years, aging and human services has seen a 69% increase in nutrition services participants. Meals provided in that same time period have increased 42%. Again, as the aging population increases, there will be increased demand on those county services. While we know demographics have an impact on our service demand, we also know that increased GDP growth is increasing demands on resources. Johnson County has the most growth in the state and in the region. From 2018 to 2023, Johnson County accounted for 65% of the Kansas GDP. This chart actually illustrates revenue sources that have been reduced or eliminated by state legislation. In 2024, the loss of this revenue equates to 2.7 mils, which the county could have received if the state legislation hadn't been enacted. Our policymakers have decreased the mill levy in seven of the last eight years. The impact of a 2.482 mil reduction from 2017 to 2025 has created an annual reduction in this revenue stream of $39 million in 2025, or a 12% overall reduction in our mill levy from 2018. So now getting to the budget summary. Johnson County budget is $1.9 billion. This includes 1.39 billion in expenditures and 500 million in reserves. The published mill levy is slightly less than last year, however, after appeals are finalized in October, we estimate the mill levy to remain flat compared to 2025 at 24.125 mils. The budget FTE totals 4,409 FTE, however, there are no new tax-supported FTE included in this budget. As I mentioned, the 2027, 2026 budget includes no new county tax-supported FTEs. We have not had a proposed budget with no new county tax-supported FTE since the impact of the Great Recession. The proposed budget is focused on funding the fundamentals and aligning resources with feedback received in the community survey in the BOCC's focus areas. A majority of our requests for additional resources or increases to the budget are for handling inflationary impacts or maintaining the county's existing services. The budget includes a target of 28% in reserves, and it contributes to us maintaining the AAA bond rating, which protects us for the unexpected and also allows us to issue debt at the most competitive interest rates. County park and recreation and library property taxes equal 28% of the operating revenue budget. Other revenues that help fund the budget include other taxes such as sales taxes or motor vehicle taxes, charges for services, and grants. For operating expenditures, wastewater makes up 27% of the county budget, followed by public safety at 25%. So the both of those two equal over 50% of our budget. The county reserves total 505 million. 35% of that is for our wastewater utility. The general fund is 43%, however, that includes restricted and unrestricted funds. Once you remove the restricted funds such as public safety sales tax, three grant and fee reserves, and other restrictions, the fund balance is actually estimated at 28% for our unrestricted reserves. Those are the funds that are available for emergencies and unforeseen downturns in the economy. So when you look at breaking down the budget, the first column shows our total budget at 1.9 billion. The second column, once you remove the reserves, we're at 1.39 billion, which is our operating budget. The third column is 558 million. This actually excludes dedicated revenue sources. This could be grant revenues, fee revenues, stormwater sales tax, revenues that we cannot use for general operations but for dedicated expenditures related to those revenues. And then the final green column, that is actually our county property tax, add the alarm taxes. That excludes parks and library, and so that amount is 288 million. So we may start at 1.9 billion, however, your actual county property tax is 288 million. The proposed FTEs are funded with other funding such as grants, opioid funds, or repurposing existing FTEs. The new FTEs align with the BOCC priorities and feedback from the annual community service survey, and they do not require any property tax funding. The proposed capital improvement program for 2026 is 347.5 million. It includes capital projects that are greater than 100,000 and have a useful life of five years. While the full project amount for capital project is authorized by the board as part of the capital plan, this does not mean the entire amount is budgeted for 2026, nor does it imply full funding through property taxes. A good example is the library's Corinth Library Project. The project is $33 million, however, there is not 33 million in tax support funding budgeted in 2026 for this project. The amount of tax support budget in 2026 is zero. Approximately half of the project is funded with cash and existing project funds, while the remaining will be debt financed with an estimated annual debt payment of 1.4 million beginning in 2027, and that will be funded within the library's existing mill levy. The largest funding sources for the CIP, as you can see, are dedicated sources such as wastewater fees, stormwater sales tax, library and parks funding, and gas tax funding from the state. Just as a reminder, even though the county collects property tax revenue, it does not retain all of it. The county makes up only 15% of the tax bill with parks and library at 2.6% and 2.7%. The schools make up over 50% of the property tax bill. The average home value in the county for this year is 508,000. This is an example of how your property taxes are calculated. On that average home value, the annual amount of property taxes paid is $1,409. So where does that money go? This is an illustration of where that tax bill and what the expenditures are that it covers. Some examples include $223 per year for the library for access to 14 branch libraries and over 1.7 million holdings, including books, ebooks, and other material. $176 per year for access to over 10,000 acres of public parkland and 87 miles of trails. $97 per year for mental health services in five separate facilities and 988 support for crisis services. $203 per year to feel safe in our communities and provide services such as jail operations, road patrol, and crime lab operations. And $60 per year to have access to an ambulance arriving at your doorstep in 10 minutes in a life-threatening emergency. There are many more services residents use every day that are on this chart that you can see. This chart illustrates the impact of taxes on three different home values at 400, 500, and 600,000. The current annual tax at 24.125 mils is shown in the second column. The third and fourth columns show the increase in each home value at the county's current valuation increase of 6.6% and the new tax amount with a flat mill levy. So as you can see, the monthly increase at a flat mill levy for a $400,000 home is $6.10. A $500,000 home is $7.63, and for a $600,000 home, it's $9.15. So about one or two Starbucks drinks a month. The revenue neutral rate is required by state legislature. The basic explanation is that if an entity levies one more dollar than the previous year, you have exceeded the revenue neutral rate. It does not account for new growth or inflation. If the county sets its mill levy to the revenue neutral rate, we would collect 23.7 million, less than we would using 2025's tax rate. The revenue neutral rate notices are sent out to residents by the county, as you may have recently received in the mail. This notice is for all taxing jurisdictions, including counties, cities, schools, community colleges, and others. The board's budget deliberations began in March with a board budget retreat. There were six meetings with discussions on the budget, and after tonight's hearing, we will report out to the board tomorrow, and then the budget adoption is set for August 28th. In 2025, we marked our third year of holding budget open houses. This year, we did increase our locations from two to five, and several meaningful conversations took place during the events, and 70% of attendees reported being highly satisfied with the event. This concludes my presentation. At this point, I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simes. At this time, we will turn to our public comment portion of this public hearing for speakers to address the commission on the budget. When people are called upon, we ask that you come to the podium in the center. We do ask that you state your name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes. There's a clock that will appear to assist you with that time limit. If you happen to go beyond the three-minute time limit, I will ask that you conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, profane, or slanderous, and please refrain from the use of offensive or indecorous language that insults or demeans any person. If we have that kind of public comment, I will provide a warning. If it continues, we will ask that you step away from the podium. I will remind folks that during this public comment period, district commissioners are prohibited from making any comments. In consideration for our closed captioners and our ASL interpreters, we will be taking a break approximately once per hour. With that being said, I will call upon public commentators in the order that they appear on the screen. I do ask at this time that everyone please join me in checking your cell phone or any other noise-making device that you may have brought. Out of consideration for the other public commentators, please make sure that it is silenced or turned off. Thank you very much. We will accept public comments virtually, so I'll ask the clerk to let me know when we can call in our first virtual public commenter.
We're ready.
Thank you very much. First is Gail Vasquez.
It looks like I'm being asked to speak, but I'm not Gail Vasquez.
Is Gail Vasquez online and available? Ms. Vasquez, if you are online, please unmute yourself. Okay, we will circle back to Ms. Vasquez. At this time, we will call on Dustin Harris.
There you go. He was trying to unmute me. So I stand before you as an exasperated taxpayer demanding you reject the proposed 2026 budgets outrageous overall 40.6 expenditure surge from 1.36 billion to 1.9 billion, slapping in 18 million in property taxes above the revenue neutral rate. This really stings the households, really contributing overall about 100 more dollars in taxes when affordability already crushes us. Nationally, Johnson County ranks in the 76th percentile for housing costs, which is less affordable than three quarters of the US counties, though not as dire as metros like New York City, San Francisco. The fact that we even have to compare ourselves to that is abysmal, but our Home Rule Charter demands fiscal restraint, yet this budget punishes residents with reckless spending. Our affordability crisis is a disgrace with a median income of $107,300, and we are in the 98th percentile nationally. 9.85% of residents face severe housing problems, and 40% of renters spend over 30% of their income on housing. Ridiculous. The 2025 community survey shows only 11% of us approve of the taxes, with BOCC meetings and social media posts raging that they're all unsustainable hikes, and 6% of home values spike in 2025, pushing the average appraisal home. She said 507, it's 570, and the proposed 24.095 mil rate levy above the neutral rate of 22.63 deepens the pain. Mr. Kelly, you actually even urged to expand affordable housing to ease the tax burdens, so why are we ignoring that for a budget that restraints, that strangles the families instead? So we can fund priorities like mental health and roads without fleecing the taxpayers. The 97 million for mental health is vital, with depression risk up 20% since COVID, but a 40% budget hike is indefensible. Cut waste from non-essentials like the 62.7 million from the Public Building Commission's fund to support mental health and infrastructure. The rated, we are rated highly by 76, which was rated highly by 76% of the residents, apologize. Our AAA credit rating actually proves we can excel without hikes. OP does that with flat rates, and the 2025 to 2029 Community Health Improvement Plan calls housing a top need with 250 homeless people in 2022. That's the latest that I had. And partners, and we could do it with partnering with nonprofits, streamlining zoning for multifamily homes within existing budgets to expand the task base, tax base, and keep Johnson County livable. With affordability already lagging and the budget risk pushing forward towards metro burdens, this budget mocks the charter's mandate to listen, reject the 40.6% increase, stick to the revenue neutral rate, and cut waste. Choose accountability.
Mr. Harris, thank you very much for your comment. Next, we'll move to Joan Swope. Next is Joan Swope. Not on, then we'll move to Eddie Croissant.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Eddie Croissant, Olathe, Kansas. As a nearly lifelong Johnson County resident, I'm very excited to start getting involved in my local government. I just wish it was under better circumstances. Just to paint the picture of why I'm speaking today, I recently got married, bought a home in the Scarborough neighborhood of Olathe, and my wife and I are in the family planning process. Then we received a notice that our mortgage, which was high, but we felt we could manage a decent life and afford a baby while paying it, was going up significantly. So I'd like to, I'd like you to reconsider raising taxes, and not because of me or my story, but because I'm the rule, not the exception. People move to Johnson County and Olathe in particular to live in safe neighborhoods with good school districts and have a little money to spare so they can go spend their extra income on the weekends. By giving billions of dollars in tax incentives, star bonds, and abatements to the already wealthy, while we fill in the gaps in the budget doesn't serve the public. $3.5 billion to Clark Hunt. This amount alone hits the Johnson County budget for two years. 227 million to Blackin Beach and 155 million to Asparia campuses will be pointless if all, if all we as, as an economic class can afford to do is sit at home, watch Pluto TV and cook ramen noodles just to keep our modest homes. The saying goes, you can't get blood from a stone and you can't get money from a broke Kansas either. To expand on this, you had a meeting two weeks ago talking about how to serve the aging population in the Johnson County area. If you cared about seniors, you would do everything in your power to try to help them keep their homes, but raising a mortgage a significant amount when someone is already on a fixed income leads to the other issue addressed in a meeting. leads to the other issue addressed in a meeting last week, homelessness. So in effect, you're causing two problems by raising taxes that we have to pay for with more taxes that could be remedied by simply lowering or even maintaining the current level and working within your budget like the rest of us. Why is it that the middle class who work in the private sector are the only people in this country who have to work within a budget? Because the government certainly doesn't. To wrap this up, just let us keep our own money. Just have, just let us have a little in savings. Let us spend a little extra cash to go out on Friday night. Then maybe, just maybe, you'll keep your jobs when your term is up. The key metric in the quality of a public servant is how well you serve. Remember that and ask yourself, if we are raising our voices this loudly against you, are you really serving us? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll ask at this time if Ms. Vasquez is available. She is not, and Mr. Swope or Ms. Swope is not available? Okay, then we'll move on to our in-person commentators, starting with Michael Garrett. Michael Garrett? Okay, very good.
I'm really glad other people don't like taxes. I stand before you today not as a supplicant begging for mercy from the government, but as a free human challenging the tyranny of unchecked taxation. They propose raising taxes on our personal property to plug holes in their bloated budget. I say no. Taxation is theft, plain and simple. It is the immoral seizure of what we have earned through sweat, labor, and sacrifice funneled into the coffers of the bureaucrats. We're literally renting our property from the government in this current system. Is that freedom? This, the county budget has increased 57% since 2019. This trajectory is not sustainable. When do we see reduced budgets and lower taxes? In 2020, governments, including ours, halted economic activity for public health, shuttering businesses and ruining livelihoods. The unelected Federal Reserve responded by cutting interest rates to near zero and flooding the market with cheap M2 money supply. Housing prices didn't just rise, they skyrocketed, driven by government intervention, not free market forces, creating housing bubbles and widespread inflation. Kansas law mandates property taxes are based on this fair market value. How is this a fair market? Property values are distorted by the Fed's rate cuts, stimulus, zoning laws, regulations, and economic shutdowns. These policies warped supply, demand, and devalued the dollar. Property values aren't fair, they're fabricated. Kansas has no moral or logical basis to tax property based on this illusion. Dare I say, the state of Kansas must prove to us that fair markets even exist. This is mafioso extortion, not valuation. I pay my taxes only to avoid the state's guns in my face and imprisonment. Noncompliance invites armed government aggression to my doorsteps. I vehemently oppose further funding this fiscal irresponsibility. I do not want to bow to theft any longer. And fellow Johnson Countyans, please reject this budget and tax hike. Cut the waste, shrink the government. We cannot fix this through the ballot box alone, we must engage. Freedom isn't free. The price of liberty is eternal vigilance and bold defiance. Things look bleak for Americans, however. We don't act like free people, but like weak sucklings on the teat of their mother. If we could see past the differences and unionize as a people, all of these games stop. We do not have to accept any further extortion on our wallets. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Next is Mary Calhoun, followed by Marvin Singleton.
Hi, my name is Mary Calhoun. I live at 7916 Oakview Drive in Lenexa. I'm here with Katie, who will introduce herself in a minute. I am the chairperson of the PSA 11 Kansas Silver Haired Legislature Group, which represents seniors over 60 around the state. We are particularly interested this year in property tax relief for seniors as well as the budget and support the budget of the Area Agency on Aging, which supports nutrition needs, home care, and other such things. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. I'm not Marvin Singleton, in case you want to know that. My name is Katie Hoffman. I am the president of the Kansas Silver Haired Legislature. As you know, we advocate for seniors. There is some good information in the budget that pertains to seniors, and we are very supportive of that. I think as time goes on, our seniors are going to need more and more help in all kinds of areas. So any increase that we can get is wonderful. Thanks for the opportunity.
Next is Marvin Singleton, followed by Katie Hawke. Oh, that was Katie Hawke. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am Dr. Marvin Singleton, 13880 Metcalf Avenue, Overland Park, Kansas. I am a member of the County Commission on Aging, an elected delegate to the Silver Haired Legislature. I'm speaking, however, on behalf of myself and as an aging Kenzon and resident of Johnson County. There are 7% in Johnson County, they're between 70 and 79. There's 44,000 of our citizens. They're 4% greater than 80, which is over 25,000 of our residents in the county. I'd like to thank the commission for their continued support to the Department of Aging and Human Services to provide Kenyon's continuing service to the elderly, especially to the ones who are homeless, needy, and care, and those issues that you have supported so well. Again, I would like to thank you for the support, the Department of Aging and Human Services, and thank you for your service to all citizens of Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Green, followed by Ben Hoiberg.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners. I'm Cindy Green at 14506 West 90th Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas. I am currently the Chair of the Johnson County Commission on Aging, and I am here on behalf of the commission to support the budget that's presented for the Department of Aging and Human Services. We represent 130,000 residents over 60 in Johnson County. It's estimated by 2030, there will be more people over the age of 60 than those under the age of 18. It's important to fund and provide services to our seniors to allow them to remain in their home as long as possible and to make it much more, which is much more affordable than moving to a senior care facility. 85% of the respondents to your 2025 Johnson County Community Survey support the systems for aging population and their families. Since 2020, the number of functional assessments that the department has completed has increased by 46%. By continuing funding for utility assistance, nutrition programs, and in-home services, this allows the clients to remain in their homes with their independence and dignity. The senior population will continue to grow, and additional funding will be critical to meet their needs. Thank you for your continued support of older adults in Johnson County.
Next is Ben Hoiberg, followed by Scott Gdanskie.
Ben Hoiberg, Westwood Hills, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners. At page 14 of your budget presentation, it is stated, "The county's five-year forecast is not sustainable to maintain our existing service levels for our residents. We have reached a point where tough decisions need to be made about generating more revenue, using more reserves, reducing or eliminating programs or services, or a combination of all these tools." Why doesn't that statement make any reference to controlling costs without cutting services? The boogeyman of cutting services is false. All you need to do is eliminate your wasteful spending. Your health services building 5.5 million toilet travesty should be eliminated because it has a more than 300-year payback period. Second, your compensation pool should be limited to 3% rather than 4%, particularly given the fact that you skew increases to those already receiving very healthy compensation packages. Note the over 10% wage increases for some of the highest earners with compensation, the four benefits in excess of $200,000 in recent years. Third, stop shifting full-time equivalent positions among departments. The presentation includes almost 53 new full-time equivalent employees. See page 11. The out-of-control increase in full-time employees is distressing. Here's charts of five-year periods for 2010 to 2015. There was actually a decrease of 1.2% per annum. For 2015 to 2020, the increase was only 1.08% per annum. For 21 to 2026, the increase is 1.55% per annum. For the last three years, however, there have been 215 new employees or a 5.14% increase, while the population has only increased by 1%. When you find operations are okay without filling a vacancy, don't use that as a justification for increasing FTEs in another department. I note the discussion on page 10, which highlights this practice. "The increase in employees demonstrate that the Johnson County bureaucracy is out of control. This board gave away $20 million to Evergreen Living Innovations in a sweetheart early termination deal, which in my opinion was an egregious breach of your fiduciary obligations to citizens. These dollars were state and local fiscal recovery funds, which were intended to fill budget holes, not enrich private parties. Finally, stop the continuation of taxes when the purpose has been completed. The courthouse tax renewal would create a $255 million slush fund, which was for capital expenditures. And now this board wants it to feed the bloat of bureaucracy. The courthouse cost $182 million. There was $43 million of interest on bonds, $21 million for the medical examiner's facility, and $11 million committed for the new parking ramp. All these capital items are completed or funded. The tax has served its purpose. The majority of this board and the county manager are out of control and have no fiscal discipline whatsoever. Thank you for receiving my comments."
He practices.
Yeah.
Very, very good.
Next is Scott Gdanskie, followed by Shanta Dickerson.
Hello, okay. I'm Scott Gdanskie from Alath, Kansas. I bought a house in 2020. I would highly suggest not doing that. I then proceeded to gut it and rebuild it myself. I would also suggest not doing that either. That was not fun. It took about two and a half years. All the while, friends, family, coworkers, my boss, neighbors, college buddies, and acquaintances were there to help, and even Menard's employees. You weren't. You were the $1,000 bill that I always forgot was coming up twice a year. Now I've had time to do my homework and go through and actually look at my property taxes. And for the last two years, my house has been compared to a house that is twice the size as mine. And then my four-house cluster, my house and the three comps, the difference in the cheapest house to the most expensive house is $110,000. To put it into context, you've said my house is worth $170,000. $110,000 difference between the lowest comparable house and the most expensive is a little, little crazy. I won my appeal last year despite having, despite being given completely incorrect information at the county appraiser's office. I did not get a single piece of correct information to get ready for my appeal. So those people need to be retrained, or you need to get on top of your system. But this year, the same house, we had the same exact thing. And using the evidence that you guys generated, my property value should have gone down. Instead, my taxes went, my property value went up 10%. So your system is completely arbitrary, predatory, unequal, and clearly punitive because I won my appeal last year. What the guy in black said, the first one, the spoken person, taxation is theft. But keep in mind, you've got, you've been giving tax breaks to places like Coca-Cola and Panasonic, and somebody mentioned another one. The entire plan on giving tax breaks to the corporations is that when new people move in, they pay the property taxes that the companies aren't paying. They pay the vehicle registrations, they pay the sales tax revenues, and they pay the income tax that the corporation didn't have to pay you. It's not a tax benefit for the corporations, it's just another tax on us. And you wonder, you wonder, somebody needs to do the math, what happens when there's, sorry, I was gonna say old people. Elderly people, when my generation can't afford to live here, and there's more people who fall into that category than my generation that own property because you've priced it out of existence. So, there you go.
Thank you. Next is Shanta Dickerson, followed by Dr. James Lucas.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Shanta Dickerson at 5100 Foxridge Drive in Mission, and I serve as Executive Director of the Friends of Johnson County Library. Johnson County Library is a cornerstone of our community. It provides access to learning, opportunity, and connection for every resident. But these services are only possible with strong and consistent funding. 70 years ago, our founders petitioned for a county-funded public library system because they knew it was essential for a thriving community. That vision is just as true today. The Friends continue our legacy by advocating to ensure that our library has the resources needed to meet the high expectations and frankly, demands of our residents. Every year, our volunteer and network of over 1,200 dues-paying members contribute over 20,000 hours of time and talent because they believe in the library's mission to provide access to ideas, information, experiences, and materials that support and enrich people's lives. The steadfast commitment of our supporters reflects the widespread community of support for our library. On behalf of the Friends and as a county resident, I urge you to continue prioritizing robust library funding. Your investment protects one of Johnson County's most vital institutions, and it keeps our community strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. James Lucas, followed by Jay Moyer.
Thank you. My name is Dr. James Lucas. I live in Alath, Kansas. My comments are in a couple of parts. The first one is on the budget. There are so many businesses and new homes being added every month to this city of 630,000 people. I believe the current budget should be more than sufficient to meet needs, especially if it's managed properly. I managed about $250 million worth of projects back in the day. Our projects are not being managed properly. It is simply not reasonable for the county to demand an increase of over 12% for property taxes when the US inflation rate from July 1st, 24 through June 30th, 25 was 2.7%. The 2025 proposed tax exceeding 24 tax for Johnson County is an increase of 12.271%. But the money to pay for this outrageous increase has to come from some other source of income. Why? Because property tax is a tax on unrealized gain, but our payment is in real dollars. In other words, the alleged increase in property value is a mythical number, which the homeowner can't use to pay the higher taxes unless he or she sells his or her property. The realities for the Johnson County citizens, including people here, is this. For seniors, the increase in Social Security for 2025 was only 2.5%. You don't have to have 20 hours of college calculus like I do to see that this is dramatically less than the proposed tax increase for all of the government agencies, not just Johnson County, of 11.652%. Even for wage earners, the taxes only went, wages only went up 3.9% from July 1st, 24 through June 30th this year. So in a world where homeowners have increased income of only 2.5% to 3.9%, how can our government entities at all levels possibly morally justify increasing the taxes on the unrealized gain, the imaginary gain, on our property value, 11.6? unrealized gain, the imaginary gain on our property value, 11.652%? On property taxes in general, we already pay taxes when we buy a home, then without doing anything, we're taxed every year for simply owning the home. The ad valorem, which is Latin for "to the value" tax, is annually determined by an arbitrary, made-up assessment by a bureaucrat looking at various properties in the vicinity of yours, no value of what's going on with the actual properties, and then ratcheting up the alleged value of your home based on this cursory, superficial assessment. If you add this dubious math, to this dubious math, a mill levy, which is an arbitrary multiplier, point blah blah blah, of our alleged assessed value, we end up with a, here's what you owe us this, this year number. If property values ever take a downturn, the mill levy multiplier can be increased so that the actual property taxes don't go down, and you can even increase them by decreasing the mill levy. All because the government can't figure out how to live within a budget, be frugal, not spend our money, or manage projects well, like the disastrous Wieselmann, or somebody said, the 50% increase in concrete costs. Part of that, if all of you look around at construction going on, if you watch the concrete being poured, and you see the water coming out, destroying the concrete.
Next is Jay Moyer, followed by Galene Van Horn.
Good evening. My name is Jay Moyer, and I live in Overland Park. I am here today, I sit on the County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coalition. I also sit on the Friends of the Library Board with Shanta over there. And I didn't write any prepared remarks for a very specific reason, because I've been trying to think in my mind about what Johnson County means to me. I was born and raised here in Johnson County. I've lived here, with the exception of going to college for a couple of years, my whole life. And, you know, I, I get confused when I hear these things about mismanaged projects and, and, you know, I, I really feel for the people who say that costs are rising, because they are. I work two jobs. I rent in Johnson County. I was looking at the ad valorem tax, you know, annual rates that are listed on the presentation that you all gave, and some of those rates are just about annually what I pay in my rent a month, right? So clearly, it's expensive to live here. I think about the 770, or 700,000, almost, residents of Johnson County that I share our community with, and, and I think about how nice of a place it is to live here. I think about how I don't have to worry too much about potholes on our roads, how much I don't have to worry too much about walking into a library and feeling safe and feeling like it doesn't have the resources necessary to provide for me. And I recognize that not everyone in this room is going to agree with me. I don't think I'm gonna get a lot of applause after I speak here. But I do want to let people know that I'm a Johnson Countyan that believes in what you're doing, because I believe in the services that you all are providing. We've heard it from the, the senior group that came and spoke earlier that was proud of the services that you provide for our aging population here in Johnson County. And I think about those little things. I'm glad that if I can call 911, that it's gonna take someone less than 10 minutes to show up at my doorstep. That makes me want to stay in Johnson County. I think that that's a small price to pay. You know, I mentioned before, I work two jobs, right? I'm pulling myself up by my bootstraps here. And you know what? I'm not that upset about it. I lead a pretty happy life, and it's because I have the resources. And the neighbors, they're wonderful people that are filling this room. This is a beautiful thing. And I'm, I'm just happy that we have that here in Johnson County. I want to close by saying, you know, I have friends that have moved here from Kansas City, Missouri, because of our public schools, because the public schools in Kansas City, Missouri, aren't as good as they are here in Johnson County, because we commit to investing in them. Johnson County Community College is a great resource. I think about people in Wyandotte County. I have friends who still live up there that sometimes don't even drink water out of their tap because they don't have the resources and the funding for making sure that there's clean water. And so I'm proud to be a Johnson Countyan, and I support this budget, because I want to make sure that we continue to be that county and those resources for people who live here, work here, and decide to come here. Thank you.
Next is Galene Van Horn, followed by Cassie Woolworth.
Galene Van Horn Lenexa, Chairman, Commissioners. This is a budget hearing and meeting, and maybe a listening meeting, although it would be rare. As I've spoken numerous times, I've not seen anything happen. Likely, it's a show to show everybody that you should care. You are planning a 6% property tax increase, and yet inflation is about 3%. Why are you increasing our property taxes at double the amount of our inflation, especially when you have 500 million in cash reserves? You are spending our hard-earned dollars when you have nearly half of the 2026 budget banked. Why not spend some of our banked dollars? What you are telling us is, we, hard-working constituents, must pay higher taxes so you can hold on to your bloated cash hoard, while our accounts diminish to the extent we question if we can continue to live in our homes. Affordable housing is one of your buzzwords. You are the ones making affordable housing a serious threat. Yes, you say county taxes are only a small portion of my property tax. However, when I add my tax amounts for the county, library, and parks, it's nearly 25%. Further, you want to be considered leaders of Johnson County. You should lead by staying at the revenue-neutral rate as a maximum and be true leaders. To be true leaders, your budget should come in below the revenue, revenue-neutral rate. Since 2016 to 2025, 10 years, my appraised home value has increased 105%. I am horrified to think of all the years I have paid taxes on the unrealized gain of your appraisals. Every year, I have to reduce my budget so that you can spend untold dollars on industrial revenue bonds and various tax incentives. If Johnson County is such a great place, all your incentives should not be required. It is important for you to know there is no magic money machine in our backyards or basements. Every dollar you spend comes out of our pockets. Every dollar you give to someone has to first be taken away from someone else. It should be your moral duty to make sure that you justify spending for every constituent dollar, spending them wisely, with a high degree of integrity and transparency, and judiciously. Chairman, as a reminder, on July 24, you stated that anyone who did not agree with you was an extremist. Further, you stated extremists are forcing property taxes to increase. When you and the Commissioners vote for this tax increase, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. next is Cassie Woolworth, followed by Phil Bauer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cassie Woolworth, Olathe, Kansas. Been here before. I want to say I am on Jay's page. Johnson County, Kansas, has consistently been recognized across a wide spectrum, from digital innovation and public safety to cultural excellence and health leadership. These awards underscore the county's commitment to outstanding governance, services, and community well-being. I like the library. It's one of my favorite things. I love the fire department. Happy, happy, joy, joy if they need to show up, right? The police, solid plan. You guys spent over $635 million, you reallocated, let me do this, reallocated $635 million in federal funds to support affordable housing and homeless projects? $2.47 million for new 50-plus homes developed by Habitat for Humanity? $3.1 million to create affordable multifamily housing for individuals with disabilities? You funded the Salvation Army shelter. We funded $175,000 for housing systems invested by the United Community Services. You guys are trying. We didn't get the hotel. Very sad. The state people didn't do their job. We sent people to the state, to Topeka, to reduce our property taxes. We've been talking about this for years. This is not a surprise. They did nothing. They beat up on trans kids. So that's what we came away with. So now everybody's hurting. The orange guy in office is making it horrible with tariffs. I know. I had to put up a wooden fence. It went from $6,000 to $11,000 because the wood got more expensive, because you can't get any from Canada. It's tight everywhere, everywhere. And people are not gonna like what comes Christmas. Anyway, I am proud of Johnson County. I moved here for the schools. I moved here for the public services. I moved here for the disability, for the disability benefits and bonuses. And I'm thrilled we take care of our disabled, and I'm thrilled we take care of our aged, and I'm thrilled we take care of our multicultural roots. And I know property tax sucks, but I think everybody's sitting here saying, we could do better than get elected. I like getting excellence in public service awards, and Johnson County Museum was recognized with several for redlined. I love Johnson County, and I tell people to move here all the time. Yeah, the taxes suck, but I think we could fix it.
Thank you. Next is Phil Bauer, followed by Robin Cresson.
Hi, my name is Phil Bauer. I live in Leewood in the 1st District. Ronald Reagan addressed the people of the United States about government spending on April 24th of 1985. Even though his words were 40 years ago and about the entire nation, they're even more relevant now in Johnson County. Here's what he said, word for word. "No matter how hard you work, no matter how strong this economy grows, no matter how much more tax money comes to Washington, in this case, Johnson County, it won't amount to a hill of beans if government won't curb its endless appetite to spend." You know, sometimes the big spenders in Congress, in this case, the Board of County Commissioners, talk as if all that money they spend just kind of magically appears on their doorstep. Ronald Reagan also paraphrased Ms. Van Horn. "There's no magic money machine. Every dollar the government spends comes out of your pockets," meaning the people in this room. "Every dollar the government gives to someone has to first be taken away from someone else." So it's our moral duty, Mr. Reagan speaking as an elected official, to make sure that we can justify every one of your tax dollars, that we spend them wisely and carefully, and just as important, fairly. Surely, there's no faster way to see our prosperity vanish than to yoke the decent, hard-working, tax-paying citizens of this great nation, or in this case, this once-great county, to an automatic spending machine in Washington, D.C., or in this case, Olathe. Government should tax to meet the government's needs, not the government's wants. My fellow citizens, the time has come for government to make the same hard choices your families and businesses do. The time has come for your public servants to bring spending down. To paraphrase another comment from President Reagan, Johnson County does not have a revenue problem. Johnson County has a spending problem. So Commissioners, please take these words to heart. Vote no tonight on this property tax increase.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Cresson, followed by Erin George.
Hello, I'm Robin Cresson. I'm from Southern Johnson County. We all have to live within a budget. So should our county. And if you can't live within a budget, you need to make it where you can. It's not fair to put the burden on the people. Another thing, we're not tax-friendly. We are listed as one of the non-tax-friendly states. And I know people who are younger that are moving out of Johnson County to a tax-friendly state. Why can't we make Kansas tax-friendly? I'm skipping things I was gonna talk about because you're already dressed, but I do want to say I did talk two years ago. And at that time, they, except John, except Mr. Ashcroft, did not listen to the people. And they're supposed to represent all of you. What you need to do is vote. You can vote them out. Yeah. For this part, pardon, research the person that's running, and vote for the one, for what they are. Vote for the one that you think represents your values, what you want. And you know, it won't happen right away.
Ms. Cresson.
Voting them out.
Ms. Cresson, if you could address your comments to the board, please.
Okay, we need to keep voting you out until we get people who will do the job that represents the people. I'm done.
Next is Erin George, followed by Bob Holbert.
As Chair of the Johnson County, Erin George, Olathe, Kansas. As Chair of the Johnson County Mental Health Advisory Board, I would like to express our gratitude to you, the Board of County Commissioners, for your ongoing support of the Mental Health Center, its staff, along with the individuals and families it serves. We always appreciate the role that you play in addressing the growing need of behavioral health care in Johnson County. 91% of Johnson County residents recognize that access to health care is a key driver of quality of life. Johnson County Mental Health has committed to be a valued component of providing mental health care and awareness across our community. We have expanded services without increasing tax burdens. Johnson County Mental Health, after a long, hard work, received a certified community behavioral health clinic accreditation, which is increasing the access to Medicaid funding. Other areas have been able to grow because of the partnerships with cities, school districts, and grant approvals, allowing us to broaden the reach and impact of Johnson County citizens. With your continued support, we are able to build stronger crisis services and enhance prevention efforts and improve access to services. Again, I want to thank you on behalf of the whole advisory board and express our appreciation for being trusted partner while building a healthier and more resilient Johnson, Johnson
Thank you. Next is Bob Holbert, followed by Joe Becker.
I'm Bob Holbert, 12309 Maston Street, Overland, Overland Park, Kansas. I'm retired. I do volunteer for a Johnson County agency and spend about four days a week at that agency. Some of these comments I hear from people who actually have been on the board and other boards in Johnson County. What I'm gonna refer to is the board. I'm not talking about any individual here. They're telling me you can't be trusted. You're too liberal. There are six Democrats, one Republican on this board. That's not diversity. So why are, why are you trying to change the districts? Is that to get rid of another Commissioner so that you can have seven Democrats? That's the comments that have been made to me. The other comment is the 23% pay increase you took after the last election. Too high. You're part-time. So what you need to do is reduce your salaries, your compensation, or work 45 to 50 hours a week full-time and get rid of anything else that you do. Then you try to fool the residents by saying that the 1/4 of 1% sales increase tax is a continuation. The AG of Kansas stopped that. That was illegal. And now you're putting on this, I understand, on election in April. You have to justify that 1/4 of 1%. Maybe it's 1/8 of 1%. I don't know. But you have to justify it to the residents. And spending $71,000 to redistrict, again, you can do that yourself. As I understand it... As I understand it, the consultant that you've hired is a big liberal Democratic Party consultant. And the population of Johnson County is not growing like people think it is. Last 15 years since 2010, 1.1%. That's not, that's not growth. So you don't need all this money. I was in the military. I worked strictly with civilians. I could have cut 10%, 20% of them out and not lost any efficiency. And that's where you should look in your own organization. Okay, in summary, I am not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I have voted both ways. So I'm giving you these comments that I'm hearing from outside, and I hope you take the other comments that other people have had to heart and listen to them.
Next is Joe Becker.
Joe Becker, 14323 South Houston Street, Olathe, Kansas. Thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. Many of my fellow members here have already expressed my thoughts, so I'm not going to double up on those. I do feel personally that, like I said last time in the last meeting I spoke, I don't believe in budget neutral plus. The way I see the figures, I don't even believe in budget neutral. When you have a 28% reserve out of our budgeted money for reserves, I think that's a little excessive when you have over a half a billion dollars already in reserve. I really believe you ought to consider, as a group, going less than 0%. Everything else I wanted to share has been shared. I will say one thing to my peers out here. These people up here have a surety bond on them. They have to, to hold their positions. And a surety bond is a guarantee of performance that they are going to represent us. And that surety bond is questionable when they have misrepresentation, negligence, or fraud. And I've heard several people feel, in their opinions, that they aren't operating in an ethical manner. I really challenge anybody out here who has the capabilities and the resources to investigate that, to put it out there for us to join any group to challenge that, because if they lose their bonds, they lose their position. And I think the bond companies don't want to have that liability sitting up here in the performance category that they're doing. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. For the sake of our closed captioners and our ASL interpreters, we're going to take a short 10-minute break. We will restart and pick up with Melinda Lewis. Thank you for your patience. And thank you, everybody, for your patience. All right, if we could all take our seats, we are going to continue with the budget public hearing at this time. Thank you again, everybody, for your patience. At this time, I will welcome Melinda Lewis, followed by David Duncock.
Are we ready? Thank you. Melinda Lewis, 4630 West 70th Street. And thank you for your service to Johnson County. While I, like Jay, can read the room this evening, I believe that countywide, I am far from alone in appreciating the good decisions that have laid such a strong foundation for our county, making it the envy of many and such a tremendous place to raise a family. As you make budget decisions this evening and in the weeks to come, I hope residents can count on you to continue to invest in the key elements of our shared quality of life. Responsive social services, effective mental health care, compassionate supports for older adults and those with disabilities, sustainable water and waste management, world-class parks and libraries, and yes, the responsible fiscal management that makes those investments without unduly burdening future generations. These are uncertain and difficult times on the state and federal stages. It's increasingly hard for families to afford food, health care, housing, yes. And that's before cuts to Medicaid, SNAP, renewable energy, and education land on those least cushioned from the impacts. To care for the most vulnerable and ensure our county continues to thrive, Johnson County will need to not only continue our past commitments... continues to thrive, Johnson County will need to not only continue our past commitments, but step up to fill any gaps that we can. This makes me particularly grateful for Johnson County's solid elected leadership and excellent professional staff. I believe we have a commission that understands what is required to build systems that care for our residents' needs, build trust, and advance the safe, healthy, and prosperous community that makes so many Johnson Countyans grateful to call this place home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Duncock, followed by Ron Johnson.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Duncack, 7551 Arapahoe Drive, Shawnee, Kansas. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few brief remarks here. I will leave out all the numbers because I think maybe that's been covered already this evening. I don't know any of you personally. I hope you won't take my comments personally, but...
All right, I apologize. We're having some problems hearing you. Would you mind moving the microphone up? Thank you very much. Sounds like it's on.
How about that? Is that better?
Is that better? I appreciate your patience.
All right, is that better?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I'm not a professional speaker here. So I don't know anything personally, and I hope you won't take my comments as a personal affront, but I would like you to consider them. Just a couple of quick things. I noticed on the budgetary timeline, we're here on the 20th of August, and it looks like the adoption is the 28th, and a vote, I understand, is going to be held tonight. So in terms of the timeframe, that seems awfully compressed. And if the intent is to get feedback from, well, from the taxpayer and the people here in the county, I would think that maybe eight weeks instead of eight days would be a more appropriate time window if getting input is really what your sincere efforts are all about. Okay. And I've prepared a lot of budgets on the private sector, so I know it's a painstaking process, and I can appreciate that. But the thing is, for the folks paying the tab, they deserve some time. And the presentation was interesting, but this is the first time I'd seen it tonight and heard it presented. So maybe a nod to future considerations for the timeline. So that would be my first point. The second brief thing would be, there's an old truism called this, and I'm sure probably most in the room have heard of this. There's an unlimited demand for free resources. It's the same in the private sector as it is in the public sector. And the difficult job you have in front of you is separating need from want. And so we've heard impassioned pleas here for the library and mental health and seniors, and I understand all these things are good. And I think most people in here at some level would say, yes, it's an important thing to have an ambulance show up. Yes, it's an important thing to have a library to go to. But the fact of the matter is, the value in terms of what is critical versus what is a nice-to-have is what has to be addressed. Because just like there's an unlimited demand for free services, not just this government, but governments worldwide, there's another truism, which is spending never seems to get cut in the public sector. It continues to grow and expand to meet all kinds of needs. Some are essential, others, I would argue, they're not essential. They're not. They're nice-to-haves. But there gets to be a point where you sometimes have to do more with less. And I have no social media account. I don't believe in it. But I hear there's this thing that used to be called Twitter. And it had 10,000 employees, and this is a public sector, private sector example, but the same thing holds true in the public sector. The new owner said, we're getting rid of 75% of the employees. And everybody said, this can't work. There's no way an organization serving global customers can go on 25% of the staff. And I think it's called X now, but I believe it's still a going thing. It's still a going concern. And I believe what you guys need to look at, and no one can force you to do this, you have to look...
Mr. Duncock, I appreciate your comments. The time's expired. If you wanted to conclude, we appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed a couple seconds. All I would ask you to do is, it is a hard choice to make, but you have to look at what you have to cut, because everybody has a budget, and that...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is Ron Johnson, followed by Merrill Jansen.
My name is Ron Johnson, 12818 Woodson, Overland Park, and I've lived there 30 years. I'm a widower, and thank you for having this meeting and your presentation. I'm living on fixed income, a pension, and Social Security. I live year-round in Overland Park, and I would like to continue living in Overland Park. Specifically, I'm addressing the Johnson County line item of your notice for proposed property tax increase. Your apparent modest 6.448% change in revenue kills me and all other residents on a fixed incomes, as well as discrediting the Fed's attempt to reduce inflation. We need help. We are cutting back. Why aren't you? Therefore, I would advise you to not approve the property tax increase. Does Kansas' truth in tax laws state Johnson County doesn't want anyone on a fixed income living here anymore? Because we just can't pay the property tax increases that appear to have no end. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Merrill Jansen, then Michael Chamberlain.
My name is Merrill Jansen, Olathe, Kansas. These county reps will be voting on this issue in just a few minutes. They are to represent us. I'd like to show them how we vote as a group. Please stand up if you believe this property tax increase should be below wage earner increase and below Social Security increase. Please stand up.
Right. Next, we'll have Michael Chamberlain and Richard Rodriguez.
Hello, I'm Michael Chamberlain, 16825 South Bradley Drive, Olathe. I got these numbers from the Johnson County Government.org. Last year's budget was $183 billion. This year's budget is $190 billion. That's an increase of $70 million. Last year's reserves was $449 million. This year's projected reserves are going to be $508 million. That's a difference of $59 million. So 84% of this budget increase, 84% is not going to services. It's going towards reserves. We don't need these reserves. Do we need... Do we really need 28% of our budget in reserves? Or if we left the reserves alone at $449 million, that would be 23.6% reserves in the budget. In 2003, the government received a AAA rating from all the agencies in August of 2003. They cited the financial policies, including a general fund reserve that is expected to range between 20 and 25%. Not 28%. 20 and 25% estimated annual reserves for what you said this evening is that you needed these big reserves is to keep your AAA bond rating. You don't need them. I believe 23% falls in that range. So a budget increase of approximately $20 million, which would be net neutral or less, you don't need the $70 million. Another thing, if you didn't have this big increase in taxes, we wouldn't have to have this meeting tonight. We wouldn't have to rent out this hall. We wouldn't have to have all these people over here and pay them from our taxpayers' money to keep doing this. So I recommend for everyone out there, for the people that vote for this increase in property tax, is to vote them out. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Richard Rodriguez, then Linda Rodriguez.
My name is Richard Rodriguez. A little bit of background, I live in Overland Park, Kansas. I'm a veteran of almost 15 years. I was an NCO, and I'm used to dealing with officers, and I'm used to dealing with doctors. I bump heads with them all the time, and I come out ahead because I'm right. So here's my question. When you have a project, you raised taxes to pay for that project. It takes five years to pay for it. But at the end of that five years, that tax doesn't go away. You keep taking it. You reallocate it to something else. Why are you stealing money out of my pocket? If it goes to a certain project, when that project is done, that money should come back to the taxpayers. It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to us. You keep stealing from the taxpayer. You allocate it, oh, well, five years? Yeah, well, it's done. That project's good. What are we going to do with the money? Oh, we'll allocate it over here. No, you don't reallocate, move it to somewhere else. You give it back to the people who's paying it, because it's their money, not yours.
Next is Linda Rodriguez, then John Enderly.
My name is Linda Rodriguez. I live in Overland Park. I don't have a big speech. I just want to point out that in 2007, when we moved to Overland Park, our taxes in May of 2007 was a half payment of $1,232.80. In May of 2025, our half payment, because we pay again in December, was $1,606.90. Now, if you double that and then you subtract the 2007 tax from that, it's a difference of $748. That's quite a substantial difference. And I realize it's like 19 years, but at the same token, my house is 19 years older and 19 years more depreciated. So that's all I really have to say. Although I must point out here that the state of Florida is debating whether they want property taxes at all. Ron DeSantis is encouraged, is probably going to be putting a bill on the ballot there to do away with property taxes. Thank you.
Next is John Enderly, then John Jensen.
Good evening. I'm John Enderly of Olathe, Kansas. I retired in 2015 after doing 23 years total service, 20 years active duty in the military, and bought my house here in Olathe in 2008 when I was recruiting for the Army Reserves. At that time, it was worth $110,000. Now, it's worth $169,000, an increase of $59,000 or 54%. Okay, that's all unrealized gain. Okay? 50,000% of that increase has been since 2018. Okay? My property taxes, overall property taxes this year are increased, are increasing by 6.8%. Okay? To Johnson County specifically, it's by 7.2%. And to the Johnson County parks, 7.3%. This is unsustainable on my military retirement and military disability. Okay? This is unsustainable. We need to find ways to cut and save. We cannot increase, continue increasing spending like this. It's not going to be able to last. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have John Jensen, then Charlotte O'Hara.
John Jensen, Leewood, Kansas. The park and recreation miscellaneous expenditure represents 72.8% of the total miscellaneous expenditures of the county. I'm sorry. I like to mumble. In addition, the miscellaneous expenditures for park and rec is 14.7% of its total outlays. Am I to understand that there is no understanding of where $15 out of every 100 is being spent? I yield the rest of my time to the commissioners if they have an answer.
Next is Charlotte O'Hara, followed by Ed Koval.
Good evening. I want to just thank everyone here for taking the time to come and speak to your elected officials. Prior to 2020, at budget hearings, there might be two people that weren't connected with the county that came to speak. This is extremely important that the electeds understand that you are watching them, that they understand that you care, because for so many years, they have been operating in a vacuum. They are not operating in a vacuum anymore. In 2016, the total budget, including reserves, was $938 million. 2026, it's $1.9 billion. It has increased $1 billion in 10 years. My money coming in, my income, has not doubled. How come your income has doubled? This is unbelievable. And then on top of it, we have a DEI coalition, which is putting into jeopardy federal funds coming into Johnson County. There are strings attached to federal money, and the president has said DEI is a no-go. It is a no-go. And we've had VIVE, which is another DEI program, in the county for years. And then the old switcheroo is that we had an appraiser that he found savings within his budget, and he cut, I believe, three, more than three positions. And what did we do? We took those positions, and we took him into another department. And it was in the county manager's office. This commission voted themselves a 23% increase in their pay. What are you thinking about? Tomorrow, this commission is going to vote for a tax incentive out of New Citry for Yukon, which is an American company at least. I mean, the other one was a Chinese company that we gave a 30 cents a square foot payment in lieu of taxes. This one's giving a 46 cents square foot payment in lieu of taxes. A 2,000-square-foot house, that's $920 a year, $920 a year total property taxes. So they're raising our property taxes tonight...
Ms. O'Hara, good time.
...and they're going to give away property tax to the big guys...
Thank you, Ms. O'Hara.
...tomorrow. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Ed Koval, followed by Carl Cuckelman.
Thank you. And it's actually Kovac, with K-O-V-A-C. And I live behind Overland Park Regional and Oak Park Manor in the city of Overland Park. A few things. One, I've been in Johnson County my entire life, 48 years, and growing. It's just really bad taste when people are standing at their computers, after speaker, after speaker, act like you care. That'd be nice. Three children. One went to Curie of ours and Bishop Meeage. I have two children in a Holy Spirit Catholic school, because they're not going to go to the DEI Shawnee Mission School District. So I'm fine paying 51% of my property tax to the local schools. That's fine. We don't have school choice. That's a stated... That's a state issue, not yours. Almost 30% in reserves is ridiculous. Top 10 insurance companies don't even do that. I can speak of that because I worked for one. I'm going to tell you, we have over $1 trillion out in policies in force and we have less than $8 billion in reserve. That 30% is absolutely ridiculous. My question is, with all the, I have, five homes have sold in my area. Four of them have gone to landlords and to what I have heard and not validated, three to private equity firms. And they've gone 20% over asking price. I would ask the county to look at charging private equity firms and landlords way more than people that have their children in their front and backyard playing, going to the parks. And I don't know if you read the news today, Platte County in Missouri, I prefer Kansas, but Missouri, they went to 5.9, that is Sue, the government, the Platte County, the actual county, and they did settle at 5.9%. I'm very jealous. And we talked about concrete earlier. The entire time, my 11 years now living over off Long Street in Overland Park, Kansas, by an Overland Park Regional, I've had chip seal and it's taller than my garage. So I mean, I'd love if you guys could do concrete in my neighborhood. So I don't know what, what that's all about. Last thing I'll say is, I really feel, Robin, if I may, the Starbucks joke about two cups of Starbucks, that's very offensive. You're seeing people up here, you see another gentleman who has a widow, you see people up there struggling for money. I don't go to Starbucks. Most of the people in this room can't afford Starbucks. I thought that was a very, very distasteful comment and joke to say only two cups of Starbucks.
Next, we'll have Carl Kuckelman, then Denise Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank our ASL signer. I am opposed to the county raising property taxes. I pray property taxes to Johnson County, the state of Kansas, the community college, the city of Olathe, United School District 233, the United School District 233 School General Fund, the 233 School Bond, and the 233 School Capital Outlay. When my property valuation goes up, you're taking money out of my pocket. I have to feed my family and I don't get the sense that that factors into your thought process. When my property tax valuation goes up, has no correlation to anything that I've done. I haven't purchased my property, haven't sold my property, and my income doesn't go up the same amount that you're increasing my property taxes. When you increase my property taxes, I have to cut things out of my budget and that's real money that you're taking out of my pocket. One of the things that Ms. Robin referenced as a justification for the increase in the property tax is a CPI increase. And that same CPI increase is what the people you're taxing are facing as well. The increased construction costs that Ms. Robin referenced, that drives up the property values that are generating more tax dollars. And I would echo Mr. Becker's comment that you have $505 million in reserves. That's half a billion dollars. I don't think you need this tax increase.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Denise Long.
Okay, hi. I'm not a speaker and I didn't come here with a speech or anything, but first off, I'd like to tell you that my name is Denise Lugo. I live in West Shawnee and I know I very legibly wrote my name on the sheet to speak.
Our apologies.
So apparently whoever wrote that up there, hopefully they're not the ones that's going to be making this decision because if they can't read legibly, then they shouldn't be making a decision about my taxes. Secondly, the only people that I have seen here tonight look like they're retired people and my husband and I just retired. Now, I don't know what you guys are thinking because every single time that a house sells within three blocks of my house in West Shawnee, I get another letter in the mail where you've raised the value of my house and you've raised my taxes for the next payment. Now, I'm going to tell you what. Now you're coming up and you want to raise that up by another, what, six something percent? Shame on you. For shame. And I want to tell you that at the end of the day, you probably don't give a crap about anything any of us have had to say up here. You're going to blow us off and you are going to vote this tax increase in because that's what you want to do. It's not because of what the people want. And I will tell you that I took a picture of all you guys' names because I will not ever vote you back in. Now, I think, I will even be happy to stand outside of the voting place with a list of all your names and tell them not to vote you in because you don't care about what the people have to say. So shame on you if you vote this in because you are voting the retiring people. Oh, and another thing, I called the county assessor's office to complain and you know what he said? Well, you can move out of Johnson County. Well, you know what? I've been here for 28 years. I raised four kids here, my husband and I, and we worked our butts off to stay here. So now we are retired and I don't know about the rest of the people in this room, but I'm not going to stand for it. I'm going to fight you all on it. It's ridiculous to continue to raise our taxes. It's got to stop somewhere.
Tonight.
Tonight. You know, so please listen to everybody that has come up here to talk because I don't know about everybody else in this room, but I'm pretty angry about it. Is everybody else? Well, thank you for your time, but please do the right thing and do not vote this in. The taxation has got to stop somewhere.
Thank you. That is all the names on the list, though. I know some folks have either arrived late and didn't get a chance to sign up. This being a public hearing, we do want anyone who has not yet spoken, who wants an opportunity to speak at this public hearing to do so. I do ask that maybe you could line up and then when you do have your turn, please state your name and address and we'll have the clock start accordingly.
I'd love to know. I did write my name down on the list with the address and my phone number. I'm not sure.
And if that's the case, sir, I apologize, but would be happy to hear your comment.
No problem. Greg Towesley, 7540 Lackman Road, Lenexa. Going to keep this fairly short and simple. Unlike Dr. Lucas, I hate calculus. I hate differential. I'm an engineer, but I still hate them and I work simple Excel, the magic of Excel. And when I received the tax assessments, I was, I was shocked. I went back and using the magic of Excel, took a look at my taxes as well as my income over the last four years. Fortunately or unfortunately, I'm not on fixed income yet. I'm still working. I'm blessed with a job. Unfortunately, in the last four years, due to apparently unlucky choices in my professional career, my income went down 9% the last four years. Now, if we go back and look at Ms. Syme's slide number four, it states that the CPI in six years went up 22.5%. I then looked at my magic of Excel, looked at my taxes since those same four years. You guys are increasing my taxes with your proposed tax increase 23.2%. Write these numbers down and look at them before you vote. Minus 9% for my income. You guys are raising 23.2% on me in four years and the CPI was 22.5 in six years. Does that not make any sense? There's something wrong there. Slide 12. There were a lot of great key points in there about what you're doing and what has been done. But it was interesting, all that we saw on these slides was how you're spending our money and on the taxes. As was brought up previously by Mr. Hobart, there was not one thing about cost cutting or cost savings measures. Guess what I've had to do in the last four years with a minus 9% revenue salary? I've had to make decisions, tough decisions, reducing my costs and expenditures. Why can't we do that? Why can't Johnson County do that? Simple, simple math. Don't need to do calculus. We have spreadsheets. You can do that. I think we all know which direction this vote's going to go, unfortunately, but I ask you just to look at some of those numbers and ask you to reject this proposed increase and stick with the revenue neutral rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gene Sinesak, Olathe. I'd be quite familiar to everybody here at the board tonight. I've been attending Board of County Commissioner meetings since late December of this year. I'm a candidate for Board of County Commissioners Chair for the election for the next coming year. I have lived my life as a fiscal conservative and as you will have seen by many of the questions that I pose to staff every week, that I believe via difference of opinion, I understand with the board, is that we have ways that we can trim our budget. We have ways that we can continue to provide the very good services that we already provide, but as I pointed out to different people on many different occasions and continue to do so, there's a lot of money that can be saved. When I decided to run for County Commissioner Chair, one of the things that drove me to that decision was when I looked around my own neighborhood in Lenexa. It was about a 25-year-old neighborhood and just to echo a lot of things that I've heard here tonight, I feel for the seniors out here. I feel for the people that are on fixed incomes. I feel for the people that see their home insurance rates going up, their automobile insurance rates going up, the cost of food going up, their kids' education costs going up. Everything is spiraling and we can do something about it. There needs to be an acceptance and you'll see it in my materials as I canvas around, but there needs to be fiscal responsibility brought forth and there needs to be some very serious questions asked when some of the spends are brought before us. We can still provide those services. It's just a matter of cutting out some of the excesses that do exist. So I look forward to spreading my message around, to gaining your support, and to leading us to a different result.
Matthew Christensen, Overland Park. When I got my last assessment for property taxes, it was over by $60,000. I started asking around and apparently that's, that's actually been happening quite a bit. I've heard people say 60, 70, even $80,000 are what they were taxed the value of their house last year. And so I hired, oh, and by the way, that's, that's about $700 extra. I hired an appraiser to bring back down to reality and thankfully that was agreed to. That is the fallacy of unrealized gains. And that is, when you tax those, it's the government's biased opinion against the homeowner and we're almost always on the short end of the stick. And to those in the crowd that are encouraging them to spend more and more money, you don't have to wait for the tax. You could go ahead and cut them a check right now. Go ahead and pay them $700, take a thousand. I think, what, Chairman Kelly, yeah, Chairman Kelly here, he'll take your money. And one last question is, I'd really like to see y'all grow a spine. And try maybe considering, creating a committee or the equivalent and like a DOGE committee. Go through and cut all the different, have someone else go through it because apparently y'all don't know how to go through it and have them go through it and just cut all the different waste.
Hi. Teresa Smith Art, Olathe, Kansas. I would just like to bring up a couple of subjects that have not been brought up yet and that is, I understand there's a great deal of reserves. I have a background in construction and in real estate and I understand that you potentially can be earning interest on those reserves and if that's compounding, I have a suggestion that perhaps before raising taxes for people like myself, that that is, my taxes are going up by my entire frugal grocery budget per month. It's unsustainable. I will take another job. I'm 63. I'm a cancer survivor. I will survive and God will judge what's right and he will judge what everyone does to each other will come back to you. With that said, what is being done with reserves and what's being done with the interest earned under the reserves before our taxes are raised? Are we reinvesting all of that back into the community in job-creating aesthetics? If we're going to build a statue, are we building statues that are living, breathing, and job-creating? I would like you to consider that, please. Also, that if we got down to the 20% that was mentioned before in a reserves that is sustainable and still keeps our bond ratings correct, could not the remainder of it and the interest earned year after year be returned to the people in our pockets so that we can afford to pay the raises that you're asking for to beat inflation and all the other reasonable things that you're facing? I'm not negating that you are facing increases in costs, but we've had to tighten our belts. I'm sewing my own clothes. We recycle, reuse. That is the buzzword of the day and I would hope that you all would be incorporating it into the way that you do business today, tonight, and hopefully you will all sleep well.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sayed. I'm a resident of Overland Park. I moved to Johnson County about three years ago in 2022 from New York, from Nassau County, one of the most expensive counties in New York. So moving to Johnson County for me was quite a shocker, knowing that our sales tax is high of 9.8% and compared to New York's sales tax, as well as property taxes as well. So I want to respectfully bring up a couple of points. So one, formally reject the proposal of a 2026 tax proposal of Johnson County reducing the tax burden on homeowners. And second, we establish a third-party accountability board to ensure taxable dollars are being spent efficiently. Right now, Johnson County owners are paying much heavier load than the average American. Our effective tax rate is 1.32 compared to national average of 1.02. That's translated to a medium tax bill of $4,000, almost 1,800 higher than the national median income. Knowing the assessment of 6.5 this year that is being proposed is preposterous. At the same point, county spending has grown drastically. Johnson County spends about 1,633 per resident, which is more than double of Sedwick County of just 743 per person. If we match Sedwick's efficiency, essentially we could save $550 million, let's say half of that. We say, you know, 50% of, we reduce our budget, we're still going to be on a positive of about 250. So having cashes of almost half a billion plus 250 million, I think we can, it's time to give back to the, to the people of Johnson County back as a tax break instead of corporations. To establishing accountability board, not only to evaluate the new proposals, new audit professionals coming in of evaluating new projects, but also ensuring everything is made public so that way there's a clear accountability towards a concise, clear of being within budget. Johnson County is a wonderful place, a place to live. I have three young boys, six, four, and a year old. So I know schools are fantastic, but at the same point, I was out for work for six months and knowing that I had to pay same amount of taxes every month was, was tough. I know how I spent those six months, but at the same point, you know, we need to pass on, you know, we don't need 30% of our cash reserve. I've been in retail business for 20 years, have held high positions, I've run companies and, and there's, there's no, no other company does 30% cash reserve. And having that understanding for you guys to pass on to us, I think that, that will make the most efficient sense. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, thank you for letting us be here tonight. My name is Karen Flanagan, Lenexa, Kansas. I've lived in Lenexa since 2020, lived in Johnson County previously in the late 90s. But anyway, in the five years that I've lived here, my house has increased in market value, depending on the statistic you look at, either 22 or 24%. My taxes, my property taxes cumulatively have increased 36% over that same timeframe. There's a mismatch there somehow that doesn't quite line up. Also, I love the services provided in Johnson County. Thank you for serving. I know being a county commissioner cannot be easy. But we're not looking to diminish those services. I think those of us that are opposed to this increase, we're just looking to live within our means. And we cannot continue at this rate. My mother lives in Johnson County. She's 84. Her property tax increases will definitely affect her significantly more dramatically. I have adult children that live in Johnson County. It's a challenge for them also. I'm asking you to consider voting no to this tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tushar Ghosh. I'm a nuclear engineer, retired for 12 years. I worked for Red Arsenal, NASA, and everywhere we had to cut budget everywhere. So I was talking to Chairman Kelly. He was a very nice guy. And everybody is calling them personally, it shouldn't be. This is nothing personal. It is overall. So I told him I live near Blue Hill School. They lawn mow every day, they sprinkle every day, lights are on every day. So I can cut 25% without any layout. And I told them, I'll write him how to do that. So this is nothing personal. I came from California. In California property tax, if I, my property tax is $7,000, as long as I live is 7,000. So never went. If you go New Jersey, 65 and older, no dependent, no school tax. So you can do that. And overall in your budget, please cut 10%. Nobody will be hurting. And in digital time, we don't need so many libraries. Because you can go chat GPT, you can get anything. So you have to cut down library, you have to cut down some parks. And I am very helpful for you guys. You are six Democrat and one Republican in a red state. And in 100 years, US, there is no Democrat senator. So you are doing fine. So God bless you.
Hi, I'm, my name is Phil Kelling. I'm at 15604 Kessler Street in Overland Park. And I haven't got much to say, but I was astounded by the waste that, that I've heard here. And I would like to turn my remaining time to, over to Cheryl. I want to hear more of that. Thank you. Cheryl? Why not? And you cut her off?
Every person's allowed three minutes of testimony. Yes.
All right. All right, thank you.
I believe the last gentleman yielded his time. I'm Karen Cirkovich. I live at 32104 West 111th Street, Olathe. Board of Commissioners, tonight you have heard your voters, your citizens speak to you and ask for property tax relief. For far too long, the budget has been unchecked, unchallenged, and it is skyrocketing out of control, where in the past few years, as a candidate for office and now a current candidate for chair position next year, I've spoken to thousands of our residents. And the overwhelming thing that people want to talk about is skyrocketing property taxes and how they can no longer afford to live in Johnson County. Now, you may not see this as an issue, and tonight you will most likely vote to pass this budget. But I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board, sharpen pencils, and cut the budget where it needs to be. Our county does not need new buildings every two years. There's nothing wrong with renovating and fixing. There's nothing wrong with living within our means and getting the budget under control. For those of you in the audience who spoke out tonight, I commend you. You are brave. It is hard to come up to a microphone and speak your heart. I hope you remember my name next year in 2026, when I run for Commission Chair, and I will be committed to transparency and budget accountability. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Roskam. I live at 6610 Burnham Street in Merriam. I own a couple of properties there and some of them we rent out. Those property values have more than doubled in the 12 years that we've owned them. And so that's one point I think is made numerous times here about the property value increases and, and, you know, the unrealized gains. My personal opinion is we're still with the CPI and the, what you're dealing with, what we're all dealing with, with budgets, really is impact from COVID and the massive amount of money that was thrown into the system and the inflation, the resulting inflation. So I'm going to suggest, and maybe you have, but I would suggest that you're holding or cutting these taxes by extending the life on capital equipment, rolling stock like trucks. I've seen, and I'm just picking on trucks, but there's multitude of places where you can extend the life of these, this equipment by two or three years, just like my wife and I are doing. We're driving our cars just a little bit longer to get through this mess. This, this inflation will settle down at some point when a monetary policy gets in place. So my second concern really, however, mirrors what we're feeling dealing with on the federal level, and that is the interest on the debt. According to what I see online in your budget, $130 million is going to service debt this year. That's about 7% of the 1.9 billion. So that's $130 million. Do we just roll over when the next project needs IRBs or they need, they need you, or your next project needs financing, it needs debt? Again, push it out. See how much we can reduce those interest payments and that debt versus continuing to increase that. I realize that's, that those payments are going to go down in three, two or three years. But my guess is, like we've heard here, we'll find new projects to extend that out. So I would, I would implore you to reduce the debt and extend the life of capital equipment to reduce the budget. Thank you.
My name's Tom Williams. I live on Long Street, Overland Park. In my 25 years of military service, I lived in eight states. Now, tonight we heard from folks talking about how Johnson County is going to be in years come, six or seven years from now, a significantly aged population. We heard numbers of folks over 85 years, over 75 years of age, drawing Social Security over 62 years of age. In every one of those eight states, what I see is the same as I saw with you folks as I saw in those states. County boards that taxed their senior citizens out of their homes because of property tax. So Johnson County, do you want to go along with those other eight states? What I'm asking you to do tonight, and one of the interview questions most of us have had to do, deal with, is where do you see yourself in five years? Well, where do you see yourselves in 10, 15 years from now? Where do you see Johnson County in 10, 15 years from now? So I challenge you to go home tonight, look yourself in the mirror, and say, do you really want to tax your seniors out of their homes? Thank you.
Hello. My name's Chuck Stout. I live in Olathe, Kansas. I've lived in Johnson County for over 40 years. And I've only got a couple of things I want to say. Most of people have said what I'm angry about, frustrated about, the increase in taxes. I've retired, I live on a pension and Social Security, but I'm not getting rich, not the way you guys are raising taxes. But the thing I want to point out, my last two appraisals, and I lived in the same house 40 years, my last appraisals have gone almost $80,000, $100,000 in two years. I have, I have protested it. I protested a tier board. I've protested it to, I haven't taken it to PICA, which they told me I could. But anyway, this last year, I found a house I compared in my neighborhood exactly like my house, built by the same builder the same year. And my house is valued at $150,000 more than that house. So I don't know who in the hell is doing your assessing, but they're, they don't know what they're doing, okay? The other thing I wanted to mention, which has frustrated the hell out of me for a number of months, you all took a 23% salary increase after the last election, after the votes were counted, and after the property tax statements were sent out, then you announced it. And you, you never consulted the public about it. I'm not disagreeing with a salary increase, but ask these people, how many of them got a 23% salary increase last year? And by God, a lot of you are making a lot of money. And, and this is a part-time job that you have. It's not a full-time job. There is people in this county, and I looked it up, firemen, teachers, people that you are making as much as they are or more for full-time work. I think it's just terrible, and that's frustrated the hell out of me ever since you did it. And last thing, I don't know who set your 23% salary increase. You said an ad hoc committee did. I wrote every one of you a few months ago, wanted to know who the ad hoc committee was. I never got an answer from any of you because you don't give a damn. All you care is about yourselves. Period.
I'm Jim Eggleston, Overland Park. They say we don't have a wealth tax. We very much do in Johnson County, Kansas. Hooked on the opioid of rising property tax, there's, I see nothing I heard here tonight, demonstrated any real pushback for cost control. I mean, there's, uh, there's a lot of bragging about that the county employs 4,400 people. And it's unconscionable to me that there can't be found some meaningful waste and mill levy reduction. It just, it doesn't seem like you're serious. So that's very frustrating. The appraisal review is a joke. I pointed out several issues with their valuation of my house. They ignored lower-priced comparables, never got any kind of meaningful explanation. So it's really a joke. That's our only means to fight runaway inflation in Johnson County. That needs to be addressed. It looks like you spent $24 million on the appraisal system. I just hope that everything you've heard tonight gets some attention. Seems like there's just a long overdue regard for the Johnson County taxpayer. And I, I think the continued disregard is sowing a lot of resentment.
All right, are there any further commenters? Anybody who has not yet spoken that wants the opportunity to speak this evening, please come on up.
I'm Pam Anderson, and I live at 12999 West 199th Street. Sorry. And I'm just wanting to address you, we appealed our property taxes last year. Our appraisal went up 60% and the county appraisal's office didn't even question from $1 million to $1,006,000. We go in to meet with them because you have to fill out the paperwork to go in to get an appeal. And they're showing us the computer and we look at it and they taxed it twice. And the guy says, oh, well, somebody hit that number, put a two in there instead of a one. So then we had to take it to Topeka because we could not get them to decrease the taxes. And we went to Topeka and they said that Johnson County was, the 31% increase was excessive. And so it ended up, they appraised it at $1.2 million. And we didn't get that until last July. Now this year, we just find that out in July, we get another tax bill, they raise it another $200,000 this year. And we appealed it and they looked at it. Well, the other frustrating part as a taxpayer is you're paying these people to do a job. And I most certainly hope that you're not paying them overtime to do these appeals. Because we go to the appeal this year and the gal that sits down to meet with us says, oh, now they've scheduled for us to come, they know when we're coming. Well, we haven't looked at your stuff. We're going to have to look at all your stuff and we'll have to get back with you. Now that's frustrating. They set up the time and then they're not even ready when you get there. So then we took it to Topeka again this year. And whoever that guy is, he didn't even look at it. He sent it back that we live in a two-bedroom. We don't. I mean, so I can tell he didn't even touch it. Well, my next step was I was going to have to go before the tax board. I'm a nurse, I retired, and I don't want to spend all my retirement on taxes. I'm paying $18,000 a year is what you're predicting that I'm going to pay. When I bought the property, it was $10,000. Now it's almost 18,000 is what you're predicting I'm going to pay. You guys got to cut your budgets, cut the spending. Everybody else has to learn to live. I would like to do other things with my retirement besides spend it on taxes. And you all could do something about that.
Is there anybody else who hasn't yet spoken this evening that wants an opportunity to speak? Going twice? Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, everybody, for coming here. Whether you believe me or not, I really do appreciate everybody taking the time out of their day to come and speak with us. Anybody who stood up, I have looked you in the eye and have listened to your comments. And I appreciate them. I don't agree with everything everybody has said, but I believe that there is common ground. I think particularly, thank you. I believe particularly this frustration we have with the Kansas statutes, particularly around the appraisal process, is something upon which we can agree. I look forward to continuing to work not only with you, but with our state legislature on how we can look for a holistic property tax process and how we fund local governments in providing multiple streams of funding to be able to responsibly lower property taxes. I do believe in that. Additionally, I do believe in property tax relief for seniors and disabled veterans. I, and if you would like to look at the system that we have put in place for property tax relief for seniors and disabled veterans, please talk to any one of our staff. please talk to any one of our staff members and find out more about that program. To a couple of specific comments, if somebody at the Johnson County office told you that maybe you shouldn't live in Johnson County, that's abhorrent. And we would be happy to look further into that. We do not believe that. And I am sorry if Ms. Lugo had that experience. Now, and I'm sorry about that. Now, one of the commenters mentioned that we didn't show specific areas where we have found savings or or cut. Now, while it may not be in the presentation, I think the work that we have done would not fit into one particular slide, even just last week. If you go back and you look at last week's action agenda, we took a former sheriff's project that wanted $8 million and reduced it down to 1.38 while actually increasing the viability of the project. Furthermore, we actually diverted biosolids from the landfill and actually found farmers to take those and saved us millions of dollars. Just last week alone, we saved more than $10 million based on the responsibility of this board and the diligence of the staff. So while you may not agree with every decision that we make, we are paying attention. I would be happy to talk with each and every one of you more. And again, I do appreciate you coming out here today. So with that being said, one more thing. I went to the process of the revenue neutral rate hearing. This is set by Kansas statute. The timeline of this is set by Kansas statute. The fact that we have to take a vote tonight is set by Kansas statute. If you don't like that process, and I don't like it either, let's talk to the legislature about fixing it. So that being said, there are proposed motions within the briefing sheet for the board. At this time, I will hear comments or a proposed motion from anyone on the board. Commissioner Myers.
Chair, I don't know if there's any comments from the board, but I have a motion ready when you're ready.
Not seeing any comments at this time. Go ahead with Commissioner Brewer. Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate that the the action that gets taken tonight is is not on the budget. I think at the beginning of the presentation, our budget director did share that the action on the budget is to adopt a budget is on August 28. Part of the process has been the hearing tonight. I think in the presentation, we heard that back in June, we expanded the number of budget open houses to try to bring the open house to the people as opposed to trying to bring the people to one location to learn about the budget. From some of the comments tonight, I would say we need to continue to think about our communication with our county to make sure people know their nearest budget hearing location and know that the budget, once it gets published, which the proposed budget has been published for a while, know how to access it and be able to read through everything. One of the one of our speakers talked about wanting a longer timeline. I think that's a fair input. And I think we worked to do that this year. But you don't know about it. If you don't know about it, are you are you able to avail yourself of that additional time? I just want to reiterate tonight's action, to my understanding, is we're just take. We are taking the action on if we're going to exceed revenue neutral. State statute requires that if we intend in our revenue to be even $1 more than we were the year before, we have to take action on that. That's a statutory step. That's not action on the budget. It's action on if you. Number of the emails that I've received over the course of the last couple of weeks have asked about understanding revenue neutral and understanding that if we're growing a tax base, why does there need to be changes? Even if you're growing revenue with more businesses or more residents, that revenue you bring in, if it's one, if if the budget we set is even $1 more than the budget we had last year. So the money we spent last year or in this year is even one more dollar more. Next year is even more, one more dollar than this year. Then we have to take this action. So that's the action that we're taking. The budget action isn't happening until August 28. And I'm just restating that because I had a lot of emails where that was the question. And I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to kind of understand what is the action that we're taking tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 080-25, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for the Johnson County taxing district for the FY 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 16.217 mils.
Alan Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Alan Brand. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. First of all, I apologize for this screen here. So hopefully, you can see me. I want to say a couple of things. First of all, and it's been said, I want to thank you for not just coming tonight, but staying to the bitter end in which the vote is taken. One of the speakers earlier said that before COVID, the most we'd ever get is a couple of people at a public hearing. I will tell you that for many years, we got no one at a public hearing outside of staff. And there are a few staff in the back. So I commend you for that. I commend you for your energy and your comments. And I will tell you that I've appreciated the platitudes and expressions here. I think they're well intended. While I may agree or disagree with any particular one, I would say, in my opinion, what you're expressing is, are we getting the absolute best value out of the dollars we're spending for governmental services? And how do we demonstrate that? And that's a challenge. Johnson County provides a lot of great services with well-meaning, dedicated employees to serve you and all citizens of Johnson County. But how do we make sure that we are squeezing every cent of value out of every dollar that we spend? And that's the challenge that I have had since I've been on the commission. And I will tell you that I will continue to push on that because the budget, and one speaker said that it had gone up from. Yes. And in the last 10 years, it's gone, it's 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 more than doubled. And the services that we provide have improved, and they are better. But if you are, and many of you expressed this, if you're on a fixed income, when we are not able to demonstrate that we're getting the most value out of the dollars that you give us, then to ask for more is problematic. And I have resisted that and will continue to resist that. And my vote will reflect that concern.
All right. Any further comments on the motion pending? Seeing no further comments on the motion pending, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Excuse me. Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Alan Brand.
Alan Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have six in favor, one against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Is there a is there a second motion? Order, order.